At six thirty. And I would like to remind everyone present, both members of the board and people. This is being digitally recorded, so please be respectful of everyone, people speaking as well as listening. First thing we're going to do is for open session, before we get to the presentation, which is what we're going to be doing, I would like to make a couple of comments. I just completed my tenth year on the board, and it's also my tenth year on this scholarship committee. And I want to respectfully say that this is the most incredible turnout that I've seen in ten years, both in the numbers, with ten of them, as well as in the absolutely impressive presentations of all of them involved. Every person on the committee made the comment to me, and they were presenting their choices, from very briefly saying incredible bunch to wow to amazing. So I feel really proud to be able to do this. I just wish there were more money to give out because we had two extremely capable individuals who are going to receive a token, because I know what it costs to go to college. Five hundred dollars is a token. But you're most impressive, but it also speaks well for the rest of the town, the parents, the schools. The two individuals we have here have some interesting backgrounds. On the one hand, we have a young lady who is currently going to uni college. She's very concerned about space junk.
Yeah.
And she's going to be majoring in mechanical engineering and astronomy, which is impressive to say the least. And then we have a young lady who is going to be going to UMass, and she's going to be a future veterinarian doctor.
Awesome.
Equally impressive, both the way in which both of you presented yourselves in writing, the experiences you've had, it's a credit to your parents, it's a credit to the schools that you have attended, Monty Tech, Co-op. So I wanted to state this and also to thank everyone who did apply. As I said, my only disappointment is that we don't have more money so that we can honor those. But this was a very impressive group. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce from the countryhand, Renette Manisi. Would you come up, please? And we're going to make a presentation. Excuse me. So parents, if you have your cameras ready. And Abigail, why don't you come up first? Just kind of stand between us.
Put it all the way, keep it. Give me out the picture.
Did I say something?
No. Yes, it's you.
So.
See, we didn't have to tell you to smile. Do you want to smile?
Is there anything you would like to say?
Thank you, honestly, thank you guys. I mean, you know that college is expensive, so this is really helpful. Thank you.
And they've done a great job, and your dedication to your studies and your community is just outstanding.
Thank you.
Good luck. And Elise? How do you pronounce your last name? Cuskey?
Cuskey.
Cuskey.
And again, your commitment to your education, to your community, absolutely outstanding. And we are so honored to be able to give you this.
Thank you.
I hope it helps.
Thank you.
Thank you all. You're welcome to stay, but if you would like to leave, this would be the opportunity for you.
Good luck with your studies.
Thank you folks, thank you.
Bye. The future of our country.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks for coming, congratulations. Nice job, Jeff.
Okay, anyone else here for open session? Sir?
The National Grid thing?
That's coming up.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Katie, announcements.
All right, so we had the Hubbardston Fair, which was great. I did, the rain held off, everyone had a lovely day. We did have a little sprinkle in the middle, but other than that, it was, it was very brief. There was lots of food, there was music playing, there was lots of vendors. It was just so many people. I was actually impressed on how many people showed up and participated, enjoyed the day. There was snakes, there was pony rides, there was bounce houses, there was kids running around all day enjoying themselves. And the parents are just like, be free, you know, it's, it's everything what a little town fair should be. It was great. So if you missed it, I'm sorry. Come back next year, we'll have it again. We do have some upcoming things. We got a summer concert series. So save the dates, I got July fifteenth, we're going to have Neon Alley, which is a rock cover band. July twenty-second, we have ASB, which is a soul funk rhythm and blues band. August fifth, we have Kelly Music Program. It's a bunch of kids, and I'm actually really impressed with these kids. They, they blow your mind when I was watching them on YouTube, and they, they, they can sing, they can play. It's actually really impressive. But they'll be going through a bunch of different songs, you'll see all different types of music coming from them, and that's August fifth. August nineteenth is High Power Mutants. That's the name of their band. They're also very good, they do cover band music, eighties rock kind of things. And they also have some of their own music. The times is five to eight each night, and there is a rain date of the following night. This is all at the Red Field. Jockamoes and the diner and like the Girl Scouts and stuff like that will be coming out to do some food and things like that. We'll have some kid stuff, entertainment. But basically, it's free to enter, free to come in, come, bring your camp chairs, get something to eat. The diner and the jockamoes, they're going to have different types of food to buy, they're going to try some stuff out, some new stuff. So it'll be like a gauntlet of, let's see what they can do. And hopefully it works out with them, and they can, you know, get their names out a little bit more so people can actually understand that we do have food purveyors in town. But yeah, so it's going to be fun. We also have the Diggie Dash coming up on August twenty-sixth at ten a.m. This year, I've changed things up. So Mike isn't in here right now, so Mike, if you're watching, all the forums are online. He's been bugging me about the forums, but he always wins every year, so I'm changing things up.
Good.
So this is what I'm doing. I have three different groups, yes. So I have a single occupant youth, so under eighteen. I have a single occupant adult, over eighteen, and then I have the group vessel, which is two to four people. There's going to be first and second prize for all three of those groups, we're going to do one fifty and fifty. And then I'll still have the best sink, most creative vessel, and extended voyage for trophies. Because if you sank or you put a lot of effort into making a really cool boat, or if you were in there for thirty-five minutes paddling, you're behind up, you deserve a trophy, okay? The deadline to enter is August twenty-first, but again, the date is August twenty-sixth, ten a.m. at Brigham Pond with a rain date of the twenty-seventh. So start getting your creative juices flowing and a whole bunch of cardboard and duct tape, and let's have some fun with that. So that's plenty enough for summer.
Jeff? Any comments or questions?
If I could just add, so I, Cody and I went to the Hubbardston Fair, it was awesome. Cody thought the ponies were the best thing that, you know, ever existed. So I thought that was really cool and a really nice situation. He actually really likes reptiles, believe it or not, so he was all over that tent.
Yep, the iguanas and the chabus.
Yeah, it wasn't his, well, he probably would have held, but I was like, yeah, we have enough garden snakes in home, we can hold those. But no, it was a fantastic event, Katie, they, there were so many vendors this year.
Yeah.
Keeping your hands full, and it seemed like you had a good flow of humans, and I was glad to see the porta potty was upright.
Yeah, none of that, again, this year, yeah. We were good, we were good this year, good this year.
I thought that was pretty excellent.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you, Katie.
Yep.
Okay, we have a consent agenda here that will require a motion. But one is in Minnesota, April twentieth, Chris wasn't at that meeting. Then we have the appointment resignations. Eric Gamboras, tree warden, and Candace Livingston, that says his clerk. And then we have some wage time authorization, waived time, we'll be waiving the time period for Isaiah Gonzalez, a firefighter, John Hulet, firefighter, EMT, Tony Walker, executive assistant, and Travis Brown, vacation carryover. If there are no questions or holes or anything, would someone give us a question?
I have a question on the wage time authorizations. Can I just, can you just explain to me what that is?
For which one?
All.
What's the concept? Why are they on the consent agenda and what are we waiving?
The time authorizations.
Yes, in the, in the time charter, there's a time between when I make the appointment and that you have to approve the appointment. I can get the exact language, it's something that I was kind of questioning when I first got here as well. But that's all that it's waiving, it's waiving the waiting period that you guys have to act on this. I can get the language and send it out to you so that it's exact language.
So usually there's an opportunity to object, and we're saying we don't object, so you might as well move forward.
So Travis Brown, looks like he's in a different bucket, he just wants to carry over some vacation, how much?
He wants to carry over one additional week. Because due to the lack of employees, since we're missing two and one is out on injury, there has not been much time for Travis to take time off without it significantly impacting the operations of the department. So he had just requested that he be able to roll over one additional week.
To be used by when?
If, if he doesn't use it in the next fiscal, he would have to request to roll it over again, because you can only roll over one week.
So you want to give him the whole year to use this one week he's carrying over?
Because if certain things don't change relatively quickly, the situation's not going to change. And he's actually using one right now because he is on his honeymoon, so.
So they're allowed to carry one week normally, over?
Yep. So he's doing an extra month or two.
Anything else from the board, Chris, or anybody? If not, could we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions seeing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion passed.
You're all set, Madam Clerk, thank you. Candace came just in case anyone had questions for her.
Under new business, we have some poll petitions. Just to inform the board, we will have to handle each of these separately, individually, with a motion for each one after we go through the process of what I have to read. And we also have a gentleman here, Mr. Rob Green, representing National Grid. So with that in mind, we will start with the first item in regards to fifteen jail poles. And again, I'm required to read this, so to the Board of Selectmen of Hubbardston, Mass. Mass Electric Company, DBA, National Grid in Verizon, New England Incorporated, requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. New Westminster Road, National Grid, to install fifteen jail poles on New Westminster Road, beginning at a point approximately five hundred and fifty feet east of the center line of the intersection of Muskogee Ave. and New Westminster Road, and continuing approximately five thousand feet in a northeast direction. Install new midspan poles thirty-nine through fifty, or thirty-nine and fifty, they're separate poles, right?
Yeah, so they just dash fifty would be spot.
Okay, thirty-nine dash fifty, thank you very much. Forty dash fifty, forty-one dash fifty, forty-two dash fifty, forty-three dash fifty, forty-four dash fifty, forty-five dash fifty, forty-six dash fifty, forty-seven dash fifty, forty-eight dash fifty, forty-nine dash fifty, fifty dash fifty, and fifty-one dash fifty. Install new stub poles sixty dash eighty-four and sixty-one dash eighty-four. Location approximately is shown on the plan that is attached. We are forward praise that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for the permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Set poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith marked New Westminster Road, Hubbardston, Mass. Number three zero six five zero zero seven four, April three, year twenty twenty-three. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, telegraph, signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes, National Grid, et cetera. So we will deal with this one first.
Can you pass that down, Jeff?
Yes, sure. Are you folks here to speak on any of those?
Yes, sir.
All right?
Yes, sir.
Would you recognize yourselves, introduce yourselves?
Okay, my name is Barry Arvin, I live on Seventeen Adams Road. You're proposing to put a, or they are, proposing to put a pole in, right in the center of my second access out of my property. I have frontage on that road, my driveway is on Adams Road. Now I own twenty-six acres of land there. And I was, in the, in the near future, in the next couple of years, I, my, I was going to build a, a smaller home for my wife and I on the backside of my property. And I was going to go for a variance for the driveway for this. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, let me take a quick look here. I want to first just make a note, and we're going to look at this and make sure it's the right one of the petitions, or we can talk about it now. I'll just, I'll just say it really quick.
Oh, I asked him if it was for these particular poles.
I don't think so. I don't. We.
Well, it's for a proposed pole, pole right there.
Yeah, the only reason why is that.
I haven't, I have to read, no, it's, it's just those, it's just those poles that I read about.
Okay.
Is it one of those? If not, I have to read another one for the others.
I don't know, is it?
It is, yeah.
Forty, forty-nine?
Forty-nine dash fifty and fifty dash fifty. So it is on this first petition that we're talking about.
Okay.
So you're talking about this one right here, this is going to propose.
You see what my idea?
So you don't have to use your imagination.
This is a stone wall, I don't have to use it.
Imagination.
And then it comes right down.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You know where a pole is on theirs?
Okay.
There's the pole.
That's going to be right in, right in the middle of that. I measured it. If we could, you know, skip it sideways, to the left some, you know, twenty feet or so.
Yeah, there could be potential, so.
That wouldn't bother anything at all.
So I'm going to just present to all of you what we're talking about.
Okay.
This is the page, and I'm just going to show him.
Sure, thank you.
So this is on one of the pages, and again, this is the same petition that you just wrote.
Where is it up here?
So can you do the next page, Nate, or another page of those two?
Yeah, this is the last one.
We also have it up, up there if we're doing this correctly.
Yeah, so it should be sheet eleven of thirteen, if you want to put it on the presentation. No matter what, it's sideways, so. At least, at least they could see something. So he's, his question is, so he has this, he owns this property, right? And for us, he, he's, his concern is really the placement of this proposed midspan pole. So we, these two poles exist already as is, and his concern is just the location of that one pole. Now for me, we can certainly adjust the location, fine tune location. I would just have to go back and talk to whoever did the actual design, it wasn't me, to the actual designer, the actual engineer, to tell them the proposed location would have to move twenty feet to the east or west. Which would you prefer?
That would be, that would be west. It would be twenty feet to the west.
Okay, so westward, in a westward direction towards pole forty-nine. Going towards forty-nine.
That would put it closer to the boundary right here, where I proposed the premium.
And would, it would be off of your driveway, sort of as you would describe it, right?
His plans, future planned driveway. So instead of this being a hundred and one feet, we'd probably call it eighty-one feet, it'd probably land maybe right about there. Would that be acceptable to you? Okay, so what I'm going to do is, you don't happen to have a pen for me? Thanks, sir. What I'll do is, I'm going to edit this out, just make a note for myself, and I'll be sending an email. Approximately twenty feet.
Is, do you have the proposed driveway?
No, this is.
Is it staked, so they know when they show up? You know what I mean? They're probably going to re, re-engineer it anyways, but.
I don't think it is staked, but it is the stone wall that comes out of there.
I think what he's asking is the pole, is the pole staked?
No. His driveway where he's.
This is, this is in the future.
I understand that, but if you stake where you think it's going to go, it would prob, I don't know, it would help them out.
Also, there's no driveway there now.
Right, yeah.
I misunderstood that, oh, okay.
Yeah, there's no driveway.
This is, this is in the future, because I'm planning on retiring, my wife is saying that.
So it would have to be made clear to these people where it's going to be.
Yes, that's why I'm up here.
Yeah, good question, no, I.
Well, at least, I already measured it out today.
For, for site purposes, for them, because if you're not around and they measure it from the wrong place, you know what I mean? So if it's staked, there's no question, if, you know.
Well, I can, I can stake it.
Well, I mean, I, I'm a recommendation.
I did measure it out today, and you know, twenty feet will, will get that right out of the way. Twenty feet will bring that almost to, to the, to the stone wall there, you know?
I'm sorry, say it one more time.
When will the new pole be going in?
So that I'm not sure. So from the information that I was given, the plan probably isn't even going to start until sometime next year. So it's, it's a little ways out.
Yeah.
Given the scope of the, the job, I mean, in total with all three work requests, it's thirty-five plus poles, plus the replacement of almost all of those existing.
Do they ever do the ones from last year?
A recommendation, sir, is stake your driveway.
Same road.
And put on tape between the two stakes, so they know that's where proposed.
In the future, I'm not sure, this is the first.
It leaves, you know, I would.
There is, there is.
Is there a stake for a proposal? Have you seen stakes all along the road for our proposed?
For the proposed pole, I think those got plowed over, over the winter time.
Most likely, yeah.
Because I noticed them all the way down, and I, I don't see any more of them.
It's just a, it's just a simple question to see if it was still staked out, but it's something, since it's still in the design phase, it's something that can very easily be adjusted.
Well, I can, I can measure it out, just like this gentleman said, and stake it, that's.
And if that can be left as long as possible, so that when the construction crews finally do come out, they won't put it in a, in a.
Yeah, like I told, if he puts two stakes down where it's proposed and an orange tape on it, somebody's going to know there's something going on with that spot. Let's, let's, I mean, we're talking a year from now before we start putting any poles, no matter what you put out there, it could be gone, who knows where it is exactly.
Is there any way I could be notified?
Right, before the construction actually starts, is there a way we can revisit? I mean, we, we're going to make accommodations for this pole to be in a different spot.
Sure.
Can we notify this homeowner, this resident? Somebody let us know when, when, when the job is scheduled to start?
What I'll probably suggest.
Put a fresh set of stakes out there or something.
Yeah, so what I'll probably suggest is taking down your phone number, your information, email, all three of those things. I'll need, what will probably be done.
Email, do you have, I don't have an email. I'm in the dark ages.
What will probably end up happening is that we'll set up something, we call it just a customer appointment. We usually typically use it for disconnects and reconnects for electrical service, but it'll likely be something that my clerk can take care of, make a note of, and when it goes to scheduling, whenever that may be, you would be on a docket for notification.
We did, excellent.
But would you make sure then that they have all of your information?
Yeah.
We can certainly get it at the end of the petition.
Well, this, this is all he's concerned about, because I, we have to still go through all these other twelve.
Sure, we don't want to hold them up holes.
I'm writing it down for you. You will be rescinding a new version of the documents in short order with the pole moves twenty feet, right?
We should have to, yeah, it should happen to.
Because I'm sure in the motion will be a, if they see fit, a potential approval noting that use of that pole. So that you won't have to come back, but we want to ensure that that pole is not in the way of the resident's future plans.
Yeah, you'll have documentation, so let me, I'm prepared, but I didn't come with a pen?
Like I said, I measured it out today, from, from pole to pole and everywhere. And twenty feet is going to be sufficient.
Okay, so what I'll do is.
She's writing down.
She's writing it down, I know.
So that'll be perfect, I'll take all of that, and then I'll, I'll make sure to attach it into this work request in our system. I will contact somebody tomorrow about the redesign, as well as another person in our group, should be one of my clerks, to receive your information and make sure that you get notified when this finally goes to action.
That'll be good, all right.
So I think that should hopefully suffice to get to what you need.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to give me a cell phone number too, or just the phone?
The home phone.
The reason why we asked for email and phone numbers is in case we don't get you from one, and.
I, I have, yeah.
So we can just, it's just in writing, it's all there, it can be sent to you. I mean, mailing address too, if worse comes to worse, we'll send you mail.
Our mailing address is there, our home phone and our email.
Absolutely, okay, perfect, thank you so much.
No, I don't buy, oh, no, I, no, 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 we don't buy anybody's cell phones.
Okay.
I think we have to finish that one first, Jeff, compose that.
Phone number nine seven eight, nine two eight.
Just waiting for.
Five, an email, AniArvin@gmail.com. Okay, great. It's all loaded, logical, just so I make sure I'm not saying.
Yes, thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. I need my paper back and.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, nice meeting you.
Likewise.
This is mine and this is.
Yep.
All right, folks, have a good evening.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Glad we could be of service.
Are there any more questions pertaining to these first group of fifteen poles? If not, I would.
Yes, I have some, I have a question. Jeff, Jeff read a lot of language there that I'm familiar with.
Which I have to read two more times.
What's happening here? Are you just basically replacing the existing pole? I mean, nutshell it for me, what, what, are we adding any additional poles?
Yeah, so what he had read off, the installation of the thirteen new midspans and two stub poles.
Yeah.
Those are essentially, so the, the bottom line is this, we are replacing a lot of, if not all of those existings between the span of Brigham, all the way almost to the end of New Westminster Road.
Right.
So it's quite a long distance, it's like, you know, half a mile, maybe more.
Right.
And the reason why we're doing that is because we're reconductoring all that high voltage primary lines. Because that section of this feeder is what we classify as a poorly, a poorly performing feeder. It's one of, we have a list.
Meaning you lose power if the wind blows?
It means that power is, it's a list of the worst power outages, and most frequent power outages, essentially. So that's why it's being reconducted, and it's being reconducted with, with fatter gauge wire. And if you can imagine, the bigger the gauge, the heavier the wire. If we have long spans, there's more sag, and so there's less reliability there. Therefore, the midspans in between existing pole lines needed to be installed to lift up that extra sag, extra weight.
So I can store less gas in my generator, is that what you're telling me?
For your sake, I hope so, I hope so.
So now, let's say a resident has a pole on his or her driveway, about twenty feet up their driveway. Will that be replaced with the replacement of all the other poles?
No, this is strictly in the public way, along the roadway, roadside. So are you, are you asking poles on, on customer property?
Yes.
That is not a part of this design, no.
Okay, so who owns that pole?
On customer property?
Yes.
By rights, National Grid has joint ownership with Verizon, so long as it is a joint owned pole, we do own it, yes. And we were given at some point easements to be there by the customer.
But there's no, there's no intent on changing that pole with the rest of the poles in the area?
That is from what I have information from me that is not part of these designs.
So will those heavier wires be going to that pole?
Simply just primary lines, so it's just primary. Simply just primary lines, so it's just primary, it essentially the lines that, the high voltage lines that feed into transformers.
Okay.
And then pass the transformers is everything to, you know.
Which are along the public way, all of those.
All in public way, so it's just public way, the, uh, wires being replaced in public way, poles are being replaced in public way, no wires, they're just gonna be transferred. So if you have, let's say, a house, residential house, seventy feet off the edge of pavement, they have one pole up for a service line. That pole and the service line, they're not being touched at all.
Okay.
They're just being transferred.
Okay. Got it?
Okay, Chris.
Yep.
All right, can we get a motion then to, uh, accept or not accept?
Mm-hmm.
The, uh, poll petition for one I just read, this is the fifteen J O poles on the Westminster Road.
To chair with the revisions as discussed.
Yeah, with the revisions as, uh, we've been discussing, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition before us for a pole location for Massachusetts Electric Company, D B A National Grid, Verizon Net, New England Inc. Uh, for permission to locate poles, wires, fixtures, including necessary sustaining protecting fixtures along and across New Westminster Road, according to the plan. Numbered, number three zero six five zero zero seven four dated April third, two thousand twenty-three, with the revisions as discussed with the representative.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
And second, any discussion, questions? All in favor?
All right.
Yes.
Yes, opposed? Seeing none, that motion is carried.
With your prior experience, does he legally have to read the, the entire document aloud?
From all other poll petitions, I, that's the case, unfortunately.
Sounds good.
I'll go as fast as I can.
No, I'm, I'm here only a bit.
So.
This is what I get paid for, so do what you have to do.
Okay, the next one.
Yeah, but you get paid by the hour, you're, yes.
To install, to install twelve J O poles and relocate one J O pole, okay.
Well, okay, again.
To the Board of Selectmen of Hupperton, Mass., Mass. Electric Company, D B A National Grid, and Verizon, New England, Inc. Request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. New Westminster Road, National Grid, to install twelve J O poles and relocate one J O pole on New Westminster Road, beginning at a point approximately five hundred feet west of the center line of the intersection of Venus Road and New Westminster Road, and continuing approximately four thousand feet in east direction. Installing twelve new midspan poles to support spacer cable. Relocating existing pole thirty-one on New Westminster Road. Location approximately is shown on the plan attached. Wherefore it prays that after due notice and hearing is provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan here with marked New Westminster Road, Hupperton, Mass. Plan number three zero six five zero zero three six, April three, twenty thousand twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-three. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioner's may desire for distributing purposes. Your petition agrees to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each of said poles for fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. Mass. Electric Company. Are there any questions pertaining to these? Is there anything you need to tell us about, about these particular ones?
Nope, just that it's a continuation westward, um, from what we discussed on the other one.
Okay. If there are no questions on this, uh, we do entertain a motion to accept this plan.
Just, you said westward? I thought we were going east.
So the one that he read first is.
Yeah.
Is westward.
It's from Muskegee down to the town line.
Down to, to the, uh, Westminster.
This one sounds like it's Venus, Muskegee.
Yellow. Yeah, okay.
It, it might be presented as west to east, but it's, it's to the west of the first one we just discussed.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, okay, yes, I understand now.
No problem. The way they were given today is that.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's west of the first one he read, yeah.
Correct, yes, sorry for the.
No, it's not confusing, it's just, I'm stupid.
Or is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request for, uh, pole locations from Massachusetts Electric Company, D B A National Grid, Verizon, New England, Inc. Uh, to allow for the identical locations, to permission to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereupon together in such sustaining protecting fixtures as companies deem necessary in the public way. Uh, pres laid out on New Westminster Road, number, plan number three zero six five zero zero three six dated April third, twenty twenty-three.
Motion made.
Second.
And second, any questions? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, opposed? Motion's carried, okay. And we have one more, um, and this one, talking about eleven J O poles on New Westminster Road, okay. So, for the last time. To the Board of Selectmen, Hupperton, Mass., Massachusetts, Mass. Electric Company, D B A National Grid, and Verizon, New England, Inc. Request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. New Westminster Road, uh, National Grid, to install eleven J O poles on New Westminster Road, beginning at a point approximately seven hundred feet northeast of the center line of the intersection of Brigham Street and New Westminster Road, and continuing approximately four thousand feet in an east direction. Installing eleven new midspan poles to support spacer cable on New Westminster Road. Location approximately is shown on the plan that's attached. Wherefore it prays that the, after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with marked New Westminster Road, Hupperton, Mass. Plan number three zero six four eight three six two, April three, twenty twenty-three. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground lateral cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petition agrees to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each of said poles for fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes, Mass. Electric Company. Any questions? Anything to add on these?
Nothing that hasn't already been said.
Very good.
The only last thing is just if you guys wanna visual kind of what's happening, I do believe it's very similar to what's happening here on Main Street, the only difference being is that existing poles aren't being set so far off the road.
Right.
It's just gonna be a reload, you know.
Shifting the wires.
But the wires that you see up above here on Main Street, that's the spacer cable, so it looks like a bundle of four wires, one messenger and three live legs, so, just so that you guys have a visual representation.
Appreciate that, I appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Hi. I, uh, let me think for a second.
Fine.
No, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the petition for joint identical pole locations for Massachusetts Electric Company, D B A National Grid, Verizon, New England, Inc. Uh, requesting to locate poles, wires, fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting features along and across New West, New Westminster Road as laid out in plan number three zero six four eight six two, April third, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, okay, motion made.
Second.
And second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you so much for being here and.
Sure.
Do we need to sign anything?
Yes, we signed it at the end of the time, and I sent it into.
Just out of curiosity, why don't you do just one?
In, in my experience, depending on the way that the projects are funded.
Okay.
They need cer- separate work requests, and when we have separate work requests, we have to petition you guys separately, unfortunately, I understand.
Separate, got it. Separate, yep. That's fine.
I understand, it's just a.
That's why I had just figured, make life easier, but apparently not.
I wasn't the one doing those projects, I don't know how big the, the funding that they were given per work request, but I agree with you.
Yeah, no, it makes sense, yep.
It's great to do it under one work request, even for the engineer like myself, it's just, it's a pain in the butt, gotta do it this way, so.
It's like a business within a business.
Yes, no, I get it, as soon as you say, as soon as you say funding, I'm like, oh, never mind.
You got this one telling, this section to do this.
Yeah, yeah, to do it what we, what we, uh, told you to.
Yep.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you so much, and just real, real quick, um, I believe Vince, he's the one that contacts you about all the petitions and whatnot?
Yep. Would that. Let him know about that twenty feet.
Yeah, uh, you can let him know, but I'll also be talking to him if the revision is handled through him, would that be acceptable?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so, once you receive that, then you'll be.
That's usually how that goes anyway.
Just wanted to be kosher with that and make sure that I, you didn't want me to contact you in a different manner, so.
No, you can, lagoon dice, is that?
Let, I, I don't, I, I don't, I really don't know.
Say that.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much, thank you so much, and great, great evening, okay.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You as well.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving to new business, uh, B, letter of recognition from Chief Kuchar regarding Sergeant Forte, Officer Blood, Officer Bergeron.
I was gonna say, I paid National Grid too much already.
You got the pen back, hey, I just forget about you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the attached letter is a letter from Chief Kuchar acknowledging the work of the people in his department, I will read it into the record. Honorable Select Board, as fiscal year twenty-three is coming to a close, I wanted to take a moment to recognize the outstanding work that Sergeant Robert Fort, Officer Christopher Bergeron, and Officer Donald Blood have been doing since I have taken over as Chief of Police. Although we are still short staffed, a status that we are working to resolve, we have been able to continue to provide a high level of professional police service to the town of Hupperton. Without the dedication and buy-in from these three officers, we would not be able to provide that service. Every day, these officers go above and beyond what is expected of them. The work ethic that they bring to this department is very difficult to find. I have received several compliments from residents for each of these officers over the last year on their outstanding work and their professionalism. Sergeant Fort, Officer Bergeron, and Officer Blood make my job as a department manager and leader an easy one. It is my hope that we continue to build this department and that we are able to find men and women that dedicate themselves to serving the town of Hupperton as they have, as they have this past year. Sincerely, Chief Ryan Kuchar.
Good. Any discussion on this? If not, we're just looking for a motion to place the correspondence on file.
So moved.
So moved, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, okay, none, all opposed, okay, motion passed. I am C, scheduled F Y twenty-four Select Board Goals and Objectives Meeting.
Chairman, I would like to make. Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is just kind of throwing the option to you to make a choice, because we do have to set goals as a board, as you have every year in the past, but there are a variety of ways that we could set them. Some select boards would choose to meet in a retreat session, it's not really a retreat, we wouldn't go anywhere. We, we would probably just come here, get lunch, have the goals conversation after you fill out the pre-form that I had sent you, and the other option is just doing it as a meeting. There are pros and cons to both sides, but I figured I would allow the board to choose which way they wanted to move forward with that. If we did choose the retreat style, the way the notices go out is, yes, this is a public meeting, but could you please give the Select Board the opportunity to discuss, and discuss their goals, minutes will be available after the meeting.
Questions from, probably would not, would not be.
And there will be no questions from the public.
Accepted. When Nate first mentioned this to me, I liked the idea of the retreat.
Me too.
For a number of reasons, one, it lets us be a little bit more in more.
Is it here though? Is it here?
We'd probably end up, there aren't many other locations that we would be.
Well, Lando would be nice.
Yeah, that's a retreat.
Yeah.
Only if all expenses are paid.
But, no, I like the idea, just because it, we can get to know each other in a less formal setting.
Yeah. Correct.
Where we can just sit around and talk, so that, that's my feeling on this, but anyone else have any?
I agree, you know, when I saw that, I'm like, oh, that brings back memories of doing things the correct way. That's just my feeling.
And if we wanna do it in that way, I won't need pre, this pre-form from you guys. We can just sit and kinda go over it, and then I'll take all of the information as presented and put it together in a list form for you to approve or revise at your following meeting.
I like the idea of the retreat, um, some towns are big fans of it, and that's how they operate, some towns aren't big fans of it. Sometimes you get pushback from the public, but to your point, Nate, you just explain what you're doing, you make sure you're fully transparent, you provide minutes afterwards, and you discuss it a little bit of the outcomes of it from the next meeting. Some towns even have someone else come in for the retreat, so another T A or T M or other people to help with either, you know, team building or something else for the board, so it's a little bit more than just goal setting, but.
Would this have to be recorded? Nope. I'm, no, I'm not saying I'm against it, if it's in a retreat format, that would.
It would not have to be recorded, it's.
It's just gonna have minutes.
No, it will just have eight minutes.
Okay. I didn't mean to, I thought you were trying to say.
No, that's okay, Jeff, no worries. I'm fine with a retreat, I mean, I don't have a problem with it at all.
Chris, how do you feel about this, Nate? Nate Wade?
I'm Switzerland, I'm neutral, I can do anything.
Okay, so let's go with the retreat.
All right, I will have Tony and I put something together and send out some dates that could potentially work and ideas, and we will schedule it for likely mid to late July.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you for that. Full business, Department of Public Works Memo of Understanding.
Mr. Chairman, I request this item be tabled, as I did not hear back from the D P W Union. As a update, I've been working with the D P W Union for the past month, since originally presenting it to you. It has gone back now, back and forth now twice. I have presented them with what is Travis in my final offer or presentation before just taking it off the board and saying, hey, you know what, we'll, we'll discuss compensation at the contract negotiation next year.
So you wanna table it and for a future?
Yeah, if it comes up, if I get the document back, you may agree to it, we'll bring it up at a future meeting.
You know, fine, yeah. All right, anyone have any objection to that? Okay, so we'll just table that, okay?
Nope.
Item B, Quavon Regional School District Debt Request and Assessment.
Did everybody read the document?
I did not, 'cause my, um.
I did.
All right. And I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read this document aloud, so that everybody can be on the same page, 'cause
Chromebook was on the floor since last Thursday, so.
Yes.
Well, I talked to.
This conversation can get convoluted, there are a number of moving pieces, there are kind of feelings involved in this and.
Feelings.
Yeah.
Feelings?
Yeah. Everybody's got some feelings.
It's good. Dear Select Board, I'm ready to provide you with an update on the HVAC chiller procurement and the F Y twenty-four Q R S D assessment for the Quavon Regional School District.
Hey Nate.
Yes?
KP asks a good question for people at home too, who is the author of this?
The author of this is me, I.
That's why it's heated and passionate.
Yeah. As requested, I met with the Quavon Regional School District to further discuss the details of their debt request. The attached chiller specifications outline the necessary information, which is attached, there's about thirty to forty pages of attachments, which we won't be reading, but they are available on the Town of Hupperton website. The total cost of the procurement amounts to three hundred eighty-seven thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars, with the town share being ninety-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-four cents. The chiller would be purchased through a cooperative contract with Omnia Public Equipment, which is allowed through state procurement, they join this entity. In addition to the proposed special town meeting proposal presented during your May fifth, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting, I would like to bring to your attention Mass. General Law, Chapter seventy-one, Section sixteen, subsection D. I'm not gonna read all of that, I will read the bold, important part. No debt may be incurred until the expiration of sixty days after the date on which the debt was authorized. And provide further that before the expiration of this period, any member town of the Regional School District may hold a town meeting for the purpose of expressing disapproval of the amount of debt authorized by the district committee. And if at that meeting, a majority of the voters present and, and voting expressed disapproval of the amount authorized by the district committee, the debt shall not be incurred, and the district school committee shall prepare another proposal, which may be the same as the first proposal. With that, to proceed with this debt request would not require approval from a special town meeting. Sixty days from May twelfth, two thousand twenty-three is Tuesday. Sixty days from May twelfth, twenty twenty-three is Tuesday, July eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Additionally, you could vote to cover the expenditure through other means, such as utilizing funds from ARPA or free cash, which would not need additional town votes as well. In my opinion, it is my opinion that we move forward with the debt request and not use other monies as our budget is incredibly tight and splitting the cost up will be easier than locating ninety-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars here and now. So we'll split this into two parts. So that's the the additional information on the debt request. If anyone has any specific questions, I can go through the.
So just one question, Nate. So you mentioned possibility of using free cash, but we need to go to town meeting to appropriate free cash?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you look, that's the.
So wasn't this the chiller that we were talking about a couple of weeks ago that was gonna cost one point four million dollars?
And they were very confusing to everybody and all of the member towns went back to them, told them that they had the same concerns that this board did, and then they sent out more documentation. There, it was a originally a kind of quick and fast-moving thing that they thought they were just gonna be able to get on town meeting as a debt request with little or no information. Now we have all of the information that was requested at that meeting.
Yeah, the original one had every town paying like three eighty-seven or something.
Yeah, where this went a little wonky, I believe that had they knew if hindsight's twenty-twenty, if they could have predicted that the press box was gonna be removed from this, they likely wouldn't have moved forward with a debt request for just the chiller, and that's what they did state when I met with them at the offices. But after the press box was only removed on the floor of the meeting, so they passed the the chiller debt.
So that that's the total, not all labor parts, whole nine yards, total job quote?
Yeah, what is it, a hundred and ten ton or something, a hundred and twenty ton?
Am I confident they use prevailing wage numbers?
Yes. Did they never, did they, they never said if they did three bids though. They did one.
They don't need to do three bids because of the cooperative agreement that they're.
Oh, okay, with, okay.
So in Massachusetts, to comply with any of the, uh, chapters, right? You can do the procurement straight out of the MGL, or if you use another agreement where they followed the same or better procedures to go after those numbers, you can utilize that. So a law will use like the, uh, there's a couple cooperative agreements for like vehicles that police and fire will use and.
So that's the procurement process.
School has. Yeah, it saves time.
It's them promising and signing that they will follow.
Yeah. They're probably saying that three to six months, right? Probably, if not more.
With time-wise, I mean, you're looking at, you're always adding two weeks plus preparation of documents.
Yeah.
So, but using the cooperative agreements is a lot easier, cause you don't have to go through all of those pieces.
Did they give a timeline on when this would come in?
This is being, they hope to install this like over the summer, like to be doing this within a month of now and.
So somebody that actually has one of these?
Yeah.
Okay.
Omnia.
No, so they actually have one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm shocked, cause we can't, we can't get a boiler for the school, but yeah, this chiller's available left and right.
Everything's, everything's so backward.
Can't heat it up when you chill it down.
Even the boiler got a little bit better. They're they're talking about six to eight months now.
Did?
Oh.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so.
So I I guess my question is, what protection do we have as a town, as a member town of Quavon, that this three hundred eighty-seven thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars is gonna fix the problem? I mean, what if, what if we find out that they need to replace lines and all kinds of things?
Well, that's in the language to, to.
Well, I guess that's my question. Is that all in the language of this contract?
It doesn't. It's all, no.
What is in the language of the contract?
It's the scope of work.
It's just the scope of work at this time. They.
Well, it did mention lines and it lost some things that aren't covered, which concern, is concerning.
So you're saying there is hidden possibilities?
Like some controls, control stuff and stuff like that. Basically.
All a chiller does is chill the water. Then you gotta get it, then you gotta get it to these things that are in the roof.
Yeah. So basically, the lines around the chiller, it basically sounds like they're just replacing it and using the lines that are already there and splicing in. But if you have a control on a wall in another room, that's cooked, and they're not covering it, you know what I mean?
Right. You can see the exclusions right there.
It's assumes, which is a terrible word.
Yeah.
BMS controls and integration not included. See what I mean? Yeah, it's just.
However, what we have to remember is in this specific case, the five member towns act as the purse strings and not the administrative staff.
Correct. Yeah, we're just supplying money. We don't have a say in anything as a contract, right?
Mm-hmm.
And what it does hold is that.
A hundred and ninety-five ton, yeah, that's a big boy.
Does that include, I don't see in there any including the cost of pulling the permits? Cause it's in Barry, right? So they're gonna have to pull permits in Barry.
I'd be willing to, my guess would be that Barry would waive the permits for a project at the school.
One would hope, but that doesn't mean that they will.
One would hope.
Well, with the constitution of the, um, Select Board, I would assume that, how am I gonna go that way?
Hmm.
So.
Well, unless the inspector gets paid by permits.
And then the breakdown of the would be fourteen thousand dollars a year, and it kinda goes a little bit from there.
So are they asking for one year? Are they asking to, um, put this over ten years?
They're putting this over ten years.
What's the cost of the, um, what's the interest rate?
That's what I'll have to, and they gave us three options right here. And I believe uh, interest rate.
So that ninety-nine thousand is over ten years?
They gave us five, seven, and ten to show the math out.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Year one, four point five, year two, four point seven five, year, year, year three, five, four, five, five, five.
They're only estimates though.
Yeah, and that's.
Why can't they get locked into something?
Well, for a municipality, we'd have to go out to bid for the debt. So I mentioned they have to do something similar.
Cause they take on the debt, and then like they do with us already.
The school takes on the debt?
Yeah, there's two numbers. One is the general assessment number, and the other is a deadline. This year, it was thirty-one. Don't quote me on that, but it's right around there. If you remember, we approved like twenty-eight and we needed to go back for seventeen hundred dollars out of, out of free cash, so this would will will just increase that number. It'll be the school's debt that we pay our annual assessment on. It will not be the town's municipal debt that would need to be bonded.
And what's the lifespan of the chiller? It's, it's over ten years, yes?
Probably thirty.
Okay, so it's over ten.
How many years?
Probably closer to thirty, twenty to thirty.
Oh, we're gonna get a warranty on it, I hope, right?
I didn't see anything about warranty. I, I mean, I skimmed over it quick, but.
Well, it's a new.
Usually a new unit covers, uh, one year. Usually, especially in a commercial application, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Oh, you're gonna want the rest of the warranty word.
That could be all wrong. Two hours.
Is there two hours of warranty? Nope, there's no mention of the word warranty.
Course, so, well, because they're, they're the ones doing, we're just, we're just like, we just pay, you know what I mean? They don't want us to worry about warranties or anything else, but we should be concerned, cause it's our money.
Right, here's my concern, and I don't know how much leverage we got to get the information. I wanna know how long this thing is warranted for. I wanna know how long the work is warranted for, and I wanna know, you know, the periphery. You put a chiller in, that's all fine and good. But like we discussed a little while ago, there's, there's, you know, miles and miles of lines, and there's, you know, these booster things that do something with the water when it gets there and all that kinda stuff. So, you know, we get a new chiller in there for four hundred K. Who's to say they don't come back after they put in a new chiller and say, oh, well, now this blew up, and this blew up, and this blew up, and this blew up?
I share your sentiment.
Yeah, I mean, cause I would think unless it's the same exact chiller, you're gonna have different controls for different makes of chillers, you know, just like anything else. So it's gotta be the same one if they're not replacing controls.
And if we needed a chiller, we would be putting it on our capital plan for a number of years and.
Yeah, well, they don't care because they don't pay for it.
So Nate, you had mentioned, cause we had gone back and forth on email with the contract, so are we confident they're gonna use their contract and not the vendor contract?
Yes.
Okay, so their contract should include the warranty piece.
Warranty information.
The other thing that bothers me a little when I was reading through that, and maybe it's in there and I didn't see it, but I didn't see a reference to the cooperative agreement. I'd also be interested just having you take a look and making sure that in the cooperative agreement, that we're getting everything that the cooperative agreement says we should get out of this quote.
I agree.
Make a notes.
I totally agree. I don't know, it just just seems like they just, they just, they just want you to shut up and pay your money. They don't want you to worry about warranty or anything else.
So just to cover up. Do they, do they have a CPO?
Yes.
Okay.
But we have to warrant our money, you know what I mean? Our investment, it's an investment for us.
Of course we do.
It should say it somewhere in the.
It may be Cheryl, but.
But it's just, it's like.
She may be wearing double hats at business again, okay?
They treat us like we're Red's head and stepchild or something.
These are the same people that couldn't tell us they were shutting off the water at the, at the building until today, so.
Well, it's better than the morning.
I know about it last week. I was like, oh, we gotta tell Nate.
Yeah, and see what you can find out about all that other stuff that's involved, cause it's.
So let's remember, by taking no action tonight, you're
It's important.
with the exception of if you were to call a special meeting between now and July eleventh, you're essentially saying.
Everything's good.
Everything's good, because you have sixty days after the approval of the of the debt from the school committee to vote for it and un, and.
When is the last day we can vote this for this?
July eleventh.
July eleventh?
You'd have to call a special meeting like now, cause you have to do it in fourteen days.
Yeah, but, um, it's just a phone call to whoever's.
Yep.
It has a little warranty.
What do you mean by a special meeting? Just us?
No, a special town meeting.
If we wanted to vote for or against it, we would need to have a special town meeting. As frustrated as I am, and I know many are with the way things have been going at the school, I'm uncertain if a three hundred thousand dollar chiller would be the correct opportunity to make a point.
No, it would not.
Well, they're gonna know, cause they're gonna pack the meeting with all your people anyways.
Well, it's just not. It's to do a special town meeting for that, it's gonna cost the town more money.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we need, we need a chiller, yeah, and I understand we need a chiller, but we're just trying to protect the investment that we're making. That's all we're trying to do.
Yep.
Well, then, what?
All I'm looking for is a phone call.
Trying to do two things then.
The language.
Try to find out the information for Chris, but what, can we how can we act tonight?
Can we approve it pending?
We can approve it anyway, but s- still wanna get all this information, at least.
I think we have to do anything.
You don't have to do anything this evening.
Oh, okay.
Lack of action is action, which is a yes.
This is gonna fall to place, okay?
Yeah, unless you so chose to hold a special town meeting to.
Which I don't think we're gonna make.
No.
To
You have an answer.
to say that you do not agree with the debt, which I respectfully note that I don't think this is the appropriate time to make that.
No, but maybe we could find out the, the things that Chris is interested in.
Yeah, it's not the debt, it's the warranties like Chris was saying, and, and Peter, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna get the warranty information. In their general contract, there's likely a minimum amount of warranty for the Quavon or Omnia to be able to do work with.
Oh.
Did they, did they, do we know if the Omnia reviewed the entire system or just the chiller?
I believe it's just the chiller from what I am seeing in here, and let's remember that they're, they're only, they're not showing us their cards. They're only.
Is this, do we happen to know if this is an emergency repair, or if this is more like something they've known about for a period of time and they just forgot?
I believe this is an emergency repair because they did note that if we do not vote on it, this is, this statement was prior to us all realizing that Mass General Law states that no action is action. So they had come to me say, stating that we needed to hold a town meeting in short order, or it was gonna hold back school. So the fact that they would be willing to do this in a situation where they could potentially hold back the start of a school year makes me think that it is an emergency.
Okay.
So are we okay on this?
This is okay as I think we're gonna be.
Yeah, I don't think we can be.
And again, you said you, there's no motion we need, you need, okay, so.
Not at this time. We're just essentially understanding that two weeks after town meeting, our budget line for next year is already going up.
Yeah. Surprise.
I have.
It happens every year with Quavon.
I got a bad, I got a bad feeling about this.
I will, I will get you more information.
I think we're going down an HVAC rabbit hole.
Yeah, and I think they've known about this for some time, and they just, they laid it on us right before the TM, knowing exactly what they were doing.
Where the timeline is so short.
And Chris, I'll get you warranty information, and I'll ask specific questions about what it covers in terms of further down the pipe.
Yeah, and if, you know.
And making sure they reference the cooperative agreement somewhere in this and double checking to make sure there's no additional protections in the cooperative.
Who, who, who runs the facilities over there? Who is in charge of all this?
I think Kevin Clark.
Guy's name will keep showing up.
I mean, he can't do, he don't know about this. It's the main office, it's playing games.
Uh, I did speak with them. They're going to have, lucky for us, they're gonna have me do the procurement for the boiler, so please.
Hell, yes.
Yeah, yeah, cause I did ask them during the same meeting if the procurement was gonna be done by them with one of their cooperative agreements or by, or in-house, and they respectfully kinda laughed and said in-house, but.
This is what it is.
We're pick, we, we're picking up the co, price, the cost for it, right? Yeah, so.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
All right, the FY twenty-four QRSD assessment. I will go back to reading this just in case anyone did not. The FY twenty-four QRSD assessment has been approved by Hardwick and Barry as of writing last Thursday. And it is expected to pass the remaining towns. The school administration has emphasized that Hubbardston must pay our share of the assessment. They have also clarified that they cannot make specific cuts solely for Hubbardston, as any reductions would need to be shared among all member towns. I've attached a proposed budget to meet the assessments without making cuts from staff or services. The QRSD administration has requested a special town meeting. This meeting would focus on proposing a solution for the HVAC chiller, that, well, which we now know more information on, and addressing our budgetary requirements. Below, I have outlined what I believe are the available options for our town moving forward. It is important to emphasize to representatives of the QRSD that the municipality does not have unlimited funds, and our essential local services continue to receive minimal funding. While advocating for changes on a state level is necessary, with proper planning and communications on all sides, the town can effectively plan for the needs of the school system. However, it is crucial to acknowledge that maximum increases year over year, coupled with the local school purchases and our share of new debt, debt obligations is not financially sustainable without a long-range fiscal and capital plan. So my three suggestions are okay, this is debt and and the assessment. A, allow the sixty days to lapse, thus approving the debt and hold a special town meeting in the late summer or early fall, allowing for other items to come to fruition. Our FY twenty-four free cash amount may also be certified at that time. B, schedule a special town meeting before the expiration of the sixty-day period to take vote for or against school chiller debt and for additional assessment monies. C, take no action. The school debt will pass, and there will likely be ramifications from the state per our regional agreement with Quavon Regional School District. And as I stated previously, that was written by me. I just wanted to read it into the record in the event someone else.
So, what's the percentage of OCAM and New Braintree? What, what?
So, what's the percentage of Oakham and New Braintree? What, what percentage did they get nailed with?
Low, like three, hold on, I'll get there.
The both threes, shit.
All right, let's, let's back up the bus, let's talk about this more generally, maybe I missed a meeting, um.
See, again.
So we had town meeting here and we voted.
A six percent increase.
A six percent.
Mm-hmm.
And we did not vote the higher percentage which was brought on the floor.
Yes.
Okay. So, what is the number they're looking for, the higher percentage that was brought to the floor?
Yeah.
Which is, which was what?
Nine something.
Seven point two zero.
No.
Oh, seven, seven, yeah, nine.
Yeah. It's not, it's not.
So if, if the majority of towns pass
Yeah.
their numbers, we've gotta pay the seven point two percent.
Yes, sir.
What's, what's.
And all the other towns have passed.
Which is, which is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
What's Oakham and New Braintree?
And all the other towns have passed.
Yeah, they always do, they're afraid of doing it.
Yeah.
It depends on the.
So. New Braintree had a two point three seven percent increase from FY twenty-three to twenty-four. Oakham had a seven point seven zero increase, but let's remember that they are significantly smaller where our budget is in the high five millions, theirs is mid-two millions.
Yeah, but are they gonna do the seven percent? Usually when you start hitting around seven percent, they, the towns are like.
For those interested, those are the full numbers, the lower one.
And can New Braintree even do it, two point three percent? Cuz last year they got whacked.
Well, who, who, who has approved, which towns have approved the number? Jeff's saying they already passed the number.
They've already passed all these.
No, no, no.
Very hard.
No, only very hard.
Well, well, yeah.
Very and Hardwick have passed, and.
Oh, I thought you said very and Hardwick.
The Hardwick.
So if one more accepts this number, then we've gotta pay the seven point.
Yeah. Yes. And the, they stated that they have no anticipation of having a hard time with any of the other communities.
Did the other communities, whether they had a hard time?
Barry did that.
The superintendent.
Yeah, of course.
No, but what is, what about Oakham and New Braintree? What are they saying?
Well, I have not spoken to Oakham and New Braintree.
You might want to.
Yeah.
You know Barry's gonna say yes.
Well, Barry, Barry already did, they already had their town meetings, Barry and Hardwick.
Okay. They're the first ones, yeah. Uh, so, so Barry, Hardwick.
Yeah, Hardwick is only two point seven three, so that's like, but New Braintree last year, if I remember correctly, it was bad.
You know, we got, we were bad last year, we're bad.
Yeah, but they don't have any, New Braintree is the smallest one, it's like, there's no,
Yes, but.
There's n-, yeah, and then Oakham's the next smallest.
So what action do you need tonight?
Technically, nothing.
Okay. So, see what the uptown's gonna do.
Yep, that I don't, I don't disagree, but let's remember that that i- taking no action is essentially approving the chiller debt. And I will get you those answers on the warranty in- information and what would, if they believe this is going down a rabbit hole of HVAC woes.
Right.
So last year, I know we had a sense of conversation about this as well, and I don't know how to necessarily get the other towns on board with this, but I would really like to see a time where all the town's leadership was on the same page of the notion of who can, what's the least someone, or the most someone could pay, the lowest number, and then that's it. And then everyone accordingly votes those numbers.
Do you remember, we try.
We reached out last year too, you know, and they, they didn't respond to us in a positive manner. We wanted to get everybody together.
I know, I just, I'm continually frustrated.
We all are.
All towns didn't respond.
And I've reached out to.
Yeah.
And what they're doing is they're dividing and conquering.
And I think that's wrong.
Yeah.
And it, it is wrong.
Yeah. Yeah.
It is wrong. The school system's dividing and conquering.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Hardwick has a TA and Barry has a TA, they have both responded to me over the course of this process. New Braintree and Oakham have select boards and assistants and they're less likely to answer.
Yeah.
I have, let's say I sent five emails over the last six, seven months, I haven't received a response from either of those.
Yeah. Well, well, that girl, what we were doing, the uh, that thing we were doing.
Jessica Sizer?
No, no, the one in Oakham, the nice, what was her job?
Like the executive assistant.
She was the executive assistant?
Yeah, cuz I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, but they, they seem very willing to talk, but we just, when it comes time to it, nobody wants to talk. Hey, Barry, forget it, cuz you already know that that select board is three and.
People were also losing the town administrators at the same time, something to have in somewhere acting.
Yeah. Yeah, the town administrator is, is the select board.
Yeah.
So, what did you say? Who makes the decision in these other two towns that haven't?
It's all select.
It's all the select board no matter what, but the towns with town administrators are more apt to speak to me
Yeah, and she's the actions for initiative, you are Sunday.
about what's going on and the other.
So the other two towns that.
Do not have TAs, so it is the select board and an executive assistant who is less apt to speak with others.
Yeah.
Why?
Yeah, that's the million dollar question.
We're all in this.
Have you, have you went, went there, gone there in person?
We're all in this together, we're all broke, everybody's broke.
I've done it in person.
Well, think of someone coming to us in person, they have to hunt us down, it's not gonna be that easy, they might run into Katie accidentally,
They'll run, yeah.
but that's about it, they're not gonna find the other four.
Yeah, but the only thing is call Nate and get a meeting together.
Can we? Yeah, but.
They're not reaching out, that's what he said.
They don't have it.
It doesn't mean.
That's, they haven't.
And we have, and we have reached out.
We have tried to do that, and often.
Do we, do we have a list or can we get a list, Nate, of the, um, the two select boarder, boards that haven't gone yet?
It swarped, it swarped.
Can we get their emails? Can we then send out to each of us just a copy of their emails and, you know, any of us who might be bored or have a few moments? Perhaps we could, uh, send a few emails over the next week or two with some thoughts?
I will send you the list, the list of emails that I can pull together and when their town meetings are.
That would be very hopeful, but this is.
Well, we're getting close, I, I wanna say they're all this week, next week.
Yeah. I mean, it can't hurt.
Yeah, the fiscal year is just a pro.
But this is the same thing, like before they closed New Braintree, and we had that big meeting,
Mm-hmm.
and I emailed everybody that I could get my hands on it.
They don't care.
And nobody responded, but yet after the meeting, they're all like, that was exactly what I was thinking, I'm like, but why, this is your town, why aren't you speaking up?
Yeah. Remember that, yeah.
I can't, why am I complaining more about your town than you are? I don't understand, like, that doesn't even make any sense.
Yeah. It's like.
I think we all did that.
It's like they're gutless.
So, well, you know, everyone comes from a different position, but it, it can't hurt. You know, Nate's not getting anywhere because people are feeling like they're on a different level. They're not the equivalent in that town, then, you know, let's see what we can do.
But it's the two, yeah, it's the two smallest towns that are left and they should be fighting for their, they don't have money.
Town, cuz.
Yeah.
They don't have a lot of.
None of us do.
Cuz New Braintree forwarded the email that Jeff, Susan Rain and I had sent out to the head of their select board who then didn't answer. So after sending two, three, four emails, I did not reach out anymore cuz that was, was there.
Maybe they just need a phone call, maybe they're not emailing people, maybe they're the.
That's why I'm saying, go in person, let them down, go to town hall.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're, they're not at full time.
Katie, you have time to do phone calls? Cuz I don't, I don't know what's.
No, I don't, yes, not right now, I'm, I'm.
I mean, you can't.
Peter saw me earlier today, I'm like, I'm stressed a lot these couple weeks.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, it's like, Oakham, who doesn't have a town administrator, I mean, you're not gonna track anybody down there, you know what I mean?
I mean, we could take the six.
The select board doesn't go to the office every day.
We could take the six members, cuz they're both three-member boards, right? Divide them up and someone gets two people.
Yeah.
Do they?
Try that.
Try a number.
I don't, I don't know, because again, until we can get everyone in the same room together without the school involved and have a conversation and say, hey, you know, we're really trying to help everybody here because I don't think we're coming to a meeting in the mind.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen with that.
Remember what happened when we, when we requested that?
I do.
Someone, someone on the other end forwarded it to the school system and we got a MTC email.
Yeah, it was. Barry. Barry sent it.
Yep.
Cuz she's the ex-superintendent.
Well, yeah, but no, there's somebody in one of the smaller towns that actually works in the school, they do double treaty.
Yeah, they're snitches.
Ah, but yeah, it's, I don't understand why the other towns don't want, and I'm not saying it shouldn't be an us against them, we should all work together, like.
No, we should be five towns together trying to work, because, listen.
With the school, so that we all work together.
We, just like we have to absorb all those positions they hired during COVID, you know what I mean, don't, don't forget this, that's all part of this extra one too.
Oh, no, no, they're still hiring more, they're, they're hiring a new principal of a school, a whole new position.
Yeah, but i- i- at some point, it's gotta slow down, but as long as they keep getting their budget every year, they're not gonna slow down.
Whole new position. So, question Nate, of your recommendations or your options that you laid on the table, one of them had to do with potential ramifications from the state because we essentially said we're not calling a meeting.
Yeah.
Do we have, I mean, not that I wanna go down that route, but do we happen to know what those ramifications are?
I do not know off the top of my head what those ramifications are.
Well, we should know what they are before we make the decision.
Out of, out of pure curiosity, would we be able to investigate the answer to that question?
Yes.
Uh, what's the question?
If we don't, if we refuse to play ball, right, and we say we're not calling a special town meeting to go back and appropriate the correct amount.
Right. Right.
And the wrath of the Department of Education comes down on us, what is that wrath?
Right.
Receiver ship.
They just tell us, they tell us, they tell us what we have to pay, okay?
Well.
Thank you, we'll, we'll get an increase of. I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm curious.
Yeah.
I think, I, yeah, I think where it's only one town, if it was more than one town, then they'd probably take a deeper look at it, but in one town, I don't.
But they already have taken a look at it, remember, we've been to those meetings.
No, but we haven't been in receivership, no.
No, 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 but.
We haven't gone down that road, that far.
But that's, that's, I don't think a doable thing, as you said, with one town having a.
That's what I mean, so, well, there's my son, I'm sorry.
Just to get out of work?
No, he, uh, he had his Boy Scout, uh, Court of Honor, so I'm here, I'm gonna say I missed his Court of Honor.
Oh. Oh.
All right, so.
So, when's our, when's our next meeting, Nate?
What do we need to do?
July seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we put this on for July seventeenth, we'll theoretically have an idea of where we're gonna wrap.
If we put it on for July seventeenth, we're approving the debt.
Which we've already talked about earlier, that we're, I think we have.
Of the chiller.
Yeah, for the chiller.
Yeah.
I guess we've already decided we're gonna do that.
But we, there's not many ways.
Like the fiscal year is over and started a new one, so, yeah.
And. And then technically, we could hold off until fall town meeting to approve that if we really wanted to. I'm, was hoping.
It'd be more expensive to have a town meeting for just that, expensive for us, you know.
Yeah, I'm hoping, there are, there are a few planning board and bylaw items cooking
For one item, yeah.
that I think could be ready by a August, September town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I, we have to determine what we want to do with this and how to pay for it cuz my proposal essentially just takes the money from free cash and half of the money that would go into reserves and funds it so that we don't have to cut anymore, leaving the fifty thousand dollar additional ambulance payment on the table to be used next year to either fund additional school increases or, or, or get it capitalized on.
Listen, it'll be getting ninety percent next year, don't be watched.
Then, we also, there's an item that we would need to transfer, transfer monies from the cable line to cover a negative amount from this year as the cameras were purchased out of pocket by the director and we paid her back, that's why the line item this year was much higher. But then it came to my attention today that we should have split that up and paid the back money and the forward money in separate articles, so we likely need to do that, I can think of, so there are five or six things that we.
Well, planning board needs something.
And the planning board needs something.
According to the chairman.
Yeah, no, I've, we're, I know what he's talking about, but.
Got an inside track or something?
I don't pay much attention if it's any consolation.
Just keeps talking, right? It's like, yep, yep, yep.
I hear you. If the.
Well, I just asked him if he needs anything, if it's, is there anything you need to do for a special, that's, we were talking about this.
The accessory uses could likely be on the town meeting, the town center could likely be on the town meeting. There are even a couple other things that we could potentially work towards.
All right, well, let's reel it in here, I think.
I think waiting until free cash is certified is probably our best bet. Sorry for the interruption, Chris.
It's all right. Shall we move on to, to the town administrator report?
No, we haven't got closure on this yet.
Well.
Yeah, there's.
Well, I, I said shall we move on, so I mean.
So we're gonna, so we're gonna wait to see, we're gonna try to contact the other towns.
Yeah.
You're gonna forward us contacts.
Mm-hmm.
The select board will reach out to these people, that members of the Hubbardson Select Board.
And.
We'll try and see what they're doing, what they're thinking, what they're gonna do. But if one of those ti- one of those towns goes with the prot- proposed number from the school, then we're sunk and we've gotta pay it.
Mm-hmm.
But you're gonna see what happens if we, as a lone member of the Quavon Regional School District, decide not to pay the additional.
Yeah, I am, I, I'm pretty sure I don't recommend that, but.
Yeah, I don't either, but it would be.
It's good to know.
They might have all their COVID money, so it's not an issue for them to pay, you know what I mean, so.
Yeah, no, it doesn't work that way.
Yeah, but you can't, you can't, you can't use COVID to.
It doesn't work that way.
Oh, for budget, yeah, your budget, yeah.
Yeah.
But.
All right.
All right.
Okay.
And no matter what, we will know by the next meeting of the Hubbardson Select Board, which way we have to go with the assessment.
One of the other two towns.
We already know, anyways, they're gonna.
Well, no.
They all say yes.
The other town meetings are likely next week, or not, if not later this week, cuz everything was done by the end of June.
Has to be, financially anyway.
Okay.
Okay, Nate, town administrator report.
I, so I've read enough things, I'm just gonna kind of go off the cuff.
Okay.
Because, um, there was a unfortunate closure on next Tuesday, which I emailed you about, I am meeting, gonna schedule a meeting with the facilities director at Quavon Regional to discuss my displeasure with finding out one week beforehand that we were gonna need to shut down the building and the library due to lack of water. So that is not okay, we should have known about that when they knew about that. In addition to that, tomorrow, so that's bad news, to- tomorrow is the employee support barbecue, not support, employee fun times barbecue, we have moved it down to the DPW to make it easier for them so that they do not have to move grills and that kinda stuff. Mary has gone and picked up tables and chairs, Tony and Bobby are going to BJ's in the morning. So if anyone is interested, the information is in your email box, I believe it is from twelve to two, we will be locking the door. We'll put a sign on the door and send out information on the town website. Earlier today, I sent out a plea to the residents asking them to volunteer for boards and committees, including the boards and committees that have failure to elects as indicated by the town clerk in the correspondence that I left out for you today. So if you wanna check that out, I did add a little blurb about each individual opportunity in hopes that maybe someone will pick up on something that they maybe didn't know before. I was happy cuz I thought I had one person already sign up, but then I found out that Katie already knew that he was gonna apply for the EDC, so.
Sorry.
So we'll, we'll see about that.
Didn't mean to rain on your parade, sir.
Yeah, no. Um, most of the last couple weeks has just been town meeting wrap-up, cleaning up everything after that. I was content with how town meeting went and I'm looking forward to the, to the next process. I have already sat down and written out for myself ways that I was happy with my first budget town meeting period of time and ways that I can improve, I've already begun working on the documents and necessary paperwork for the FY twenty-five budget. I, I would like to extend a heartfelt appreciation to the Memorial Day Committee for their outstanding efforts holding the beautiful Memorial Day Parade. I'd also like to thank the Lions Club and the Friends of the Senior Center for their volunteer efforts organizing the after events, the hot dogs and the ice cream, all that stuff. It was wonderful to see the past few weeks and or month, how, how much community togetherness there is here in Hubbardson between seeing the Memorial Day Parade and the Hubbardson Fair. It, for a small community, there is a ton of pride in what is here and that was awesome to see. Also, thank select board member Katie Young for her dedication to holding a huge fair. There, I, I was petting a horse, I, I bought some soap, the horse's name was Nicholas.
Drinking beer?
No, no, it was nine AM.
Doesn't.
Five o'clock somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
They had mimosas, come on.
Earlier this month, treasure collector Mary Markowski, executive assistant Tony Walker and myself met and discussed streamlining HR processes. We are using the document from two thousand nineteen that was never utilized due to the obvious reasons of the pandemic. We will be working through that, which includes a policy review, which will involve you guys because I will be bringing different. because I will be bringing different policies up under policy review because of this review. We're working on a number of different things and I look forward to updating you you on that in the future. Green Communities, I had a productive meeting with our E N E energy consultant to talk about different projects that we will be able to apply for in the October round. We were not able to apply in the early, in the in the winter round because the school project was not done. And a to be able to apply for competitive grants in the Green Communities program, you have to have spent all your money. So there's that. We are working with the MRPC on the D L T A grants. The master plan will be done by the end of this year. I, by the end of this fiscal year.
Like almost time to start a new one?
Yeah. I have been working with department heads on figuring out why there are so many unfinished projects that have been funding funded at previous town meetings. There is a lot of money sitting there. A CPA library long range plan, twenty five hundred dollars. A Curtis Rec Field Improvement, twelve grand. Library Foundation, eight thousand dollars. Rainbow End Playground, five thousand dollars. Foundation repair, five grand. First floor rehab at the library, nineteen thousand. Brick repair, twenty thousand. DPW exhaust mitigation, twenty six thousand. A very important cemetery backpack blower for five hundred dollars. A recreational basketball court improvement, eight grand. A treasurer tax title research for five thousand dollars and an environmental study above of the town pit for forty nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. I've been working with the department heads to figure out why this money hasn't been utilized and when it will be. A lot of the answers for their, at least for the library's end, was that they are using the six thousand dollars from this year's town meeting to figure out what order to do the other projects. So we're throwing good money after bed. Other than that, I attended the STEM annual meeting last week. Heather was there as well. We, I believe we both signed up for a municipal accounting course that they mentioned, so I'll be taking a municipal accounting course. It's it's self-guided at night. I feel as if if the accountant is going to be virtual, I should brush up on my own municipal accounting and find a new job.
Oh, you forgot to tell KP your favorite part about it, the cost of that class.
Oh, it was free.
Free is from.
Yeah, it was free through uh Greenfield Community College and the Franklin Regional County of Governments worked together to hold this course. The.
They were probably holding up two seats for people who actually are like interested in municipal accounting who've never done it.
Yeah, where they were holding. The The goal of this course was to find people to be interested and eventually work in municipal accounting. But I know at least five people who have signed up and are town administrators, city councilors, so maybe we're not the target audience. But it will be good for Hubbardston and Paxton nonetheless. The end of the fiscal year is coming. We have already began working on that. Kelly, Mary and I have sent out the documentation. As in the email I stated earlier, we'll be doing a half a day on July third and closed on July fourth. And that is about, there are no questions. That's about it for my last P A report of fiscal year twenty twenty three. Thank you.
Okay.
Very good.
Questions?
Oh, uh Mary went to treasurer collector school on the Cape for a week.
That's a nice place to go.
And she came back.
And she came back.
She came back.
She's like, do I have to?
And out of the kindness of her heart, she turned it into a mini vacation so that the town of Hubbardson did not have to pay for lodging.
Well, that's better. Thank you.
Nice.
Okay.
Very nice.
Yes.
Alright, uh policies to review, assuming we don't have any, okay?
Okay.
That is not anticipated by the chair. Does anyone have anything?
I got one.
I figured.
To the clock. On the school.
I could've guessed.
We could just leave that item on the agenda, or two to.
I don't.
Still.
Aren't you going to meet with Kevin?
Not working.
Since I responded to you, I've gotten no updates.
No update.
I am going to be meeting with Kevin and, 'cause the last email that I sent you was the last update, if if.
Is if there's a time that you'd like, I can print it out with a cricket and we can have it permanently affixed on it, and then we'll always be that side?
It's five o'clock somewhere, right?
We can make it five o'clock. It's fine.
Well, there's there's one side that doesn't even have hands, so, you know, to make hands too.
Surprised that they'd that wasn't covered by.
I thought at one point we discussed that, we discussed that
When he did the roof and everything else.
if the repair was under five thousand dollars, it was the responsibility of Hubbardson to make that fix. Is that a fact or did I make that up?
Is it five or ten thou- ten thousand dollars?
That is a fact. If it was under five thousand dollars, it is on the school to fix.
Yeah.
It's on.
If it is over five thousand dollars, it is on Hubbardson to fix.
So is the cost coming to four thousand nine hundred ninety nine dollars and that's why it's working now?
But it's under five thousand. Yeah.
So I forwarded you this email for, so he said, well, I actually texted Kevin Clark, director of facilities management, but I didn't hear back. Today, the head of maintenance, Jay Pimental, was here, so I asked him. He said Kevin had already spoken to the select board about it. He said they called him. Upon hearing this, I figured the info was already relayed to you. Guess I shouldn't assume. What Jay told me is that new motors for many of the clocks in the building, including the clock tower clock, have been ordered and then put in, maybe by an outside person. I'm going to need it.
Okay, I just got it. You just have to. Alright, no, 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 you have to wait for the chair to call on you.
So there's new, so there's new.
I'll let you.
What, you have something?
Yes.
Motors to be.
Yeah.
Put in.
Go ahead.
Alright, so the motors were ordered during the summertime. They did get installed, but they're like s- like small motors for them that they die out really quick.
So they were the wrong ones.
You'd have to wear them like every time.
So it was working and now it's not?
I know it's not working.
Did it even work?
Yes, it did.
Then how did the one work with no hands?
They didn't fix that. They just put new motors in.
Okay.
So it's got new motors but no hands, yeah?
Well, one one side has no hands.
The the roof guys installed the motors for us 'cause they were already up there.
So when they redid the roof, they put new motors on?
Yeah. Yeah.
And they died instantly because I never saw them move.
Yes. That's why I got my information from Matt, who was a supervisor.
No warranty? What? No warranty on the motors?
So if it's less than five thousand, Quavon fixes it. If it's more than five thousand, we fix it.
It's on them. Yes, we're.
I'll take a walk over there.
How about we just remove the clock tower?
It's a pretty clock tower.
I don't think.
That's why I think it should work.
A clock.
Yeah, if it's up, it should work. I agree with that.
Yeah. It should.
Can we just sticky up there like a digital clock?
No, I don't.
L E D.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, L E D digital clock.
It only loses time when the sun goes out.
Do we know what that amount of money was to repair that or is it non-disclosed?
I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get that information. I'm gonna meet with Kevin Clark in person.
So, but the problem is they replaced the motors and they died very quickly, so it's obviously the wrong motor that they replaced.
I, something, something's not right.
No, it shot it out, something.
If it's if it's killing it, something's wrong in the.
Who's in charge of maintenance for that building? Who's the maintenance guy?
That's what we, that's what we we're going down to. We're getting there. It's been a year and a half.
Well. Yeah.
We're getting there.
Oh my god. It's, well, you know, I can understand. I mean, look at the water thing. There's no commu- I think they do it on purpose anyway, so.
So this.
Just a busted canyon.
That was true.
Okay, that's the only matter I had.
Okay, uh public press questions? Don't see any, so we'll.
Both of you turn. Second.
We should, both of you turn. Nate, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, yes.